Good evening, everybody. Please allow me to call to order the Ferndale City Council meeting of Tuesday, December the 28th, 2010. Will you please stand for the pledge of allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unafraid, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
We have roll call, Your Honor. Councilmembers Baker, here. Galloway, here. Lennon, here. Piana, here. And Mayor Cuffin.
Here as well, all accounted for. Thank you. Next item.
Approval of the agenda.
Are there any changes or switches to the agenda or a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded, Baker and then Piana. Madam Clerk.
Councilmembers Baker. Yes. Galloway. Yes. Lennon. Yes. Piana. Yes. And Mayor Cuffin.
Yes. That passes unanimously. Next item, Madam Clerk, our presentations.
We do, and the first one is from the Police Department.
Chief Timothy Collins.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, ladies and gentlemen. There's been a longstanding tradition from the Ferndale Police Department that we issue citations for merit and for jobs well done to our personnel. We are beginning a new tradition that when these are issued, we would like to do these at the city council meeting. And as a... The first one that you'll be seeing from us is a pretty interesting case that occurred back on November 20th. The highest award that we will issue locally by the Police Department is the departmental citation. We will be issuing two of those this evening. And the other citation that we will be issuing is a unit commendation. The first one, the department citation, is issued to officers who have, on their own, put themselves in harm's way to achieve a goal typically to the arrest of an armed suspect. And that's what happened in this case. The other, the unit commendation, is an award that we issue to folk, to our officers and our personnel who have acted as a team in order to achieve a goal. And again, that's where we had in this incident. I'll read you the citation from Sergeant Brown, who wrote this up for the awards committee's recommendation. "On November 20th, 2010, at approximately 21, 25 hours, a Ferndale resident was returning home from a store. As he approached his home on Pearson, two young men, walking in opposite direction, confronted him. One of the subjects pulled out a loaded .45 caliber handgun and pointed it at the man's head and fired a shot that left stippling on the left side of his face. The other suspect picked up the 12-pack of beer the victim had dropped, and both suspects fled on foot towards Woodward Avenue. The victim called the Ferndale Police Department and gave a description of the suspect, which was broadcast to all Ferndale Police cars, as well as Oakland County Sheriff's Department, who were monitoring our frequency. An area check was conducted, and Officer Cleveland, who is here tonight with his family, and saw two subjects matching the description near Woodward and West Marshall. Officer Cleveland confronted the young men, one of whom immediately surrendered, and the other fled on foot. Officer Spellman, also here in the back, saw the suspect running from the scene and began chasing him. During the foot chase, Officer Spellman saw the suspect drop a handgun into some bushes. Officer Spellman continued chasing the suspect for several blocks and eventually located him hiding in a dumpster behind the Woodward Avenue Subway restaurant. He was assisted by Officer Collette and Deputy Marsban, also here this evening. Officer Frazier, from the Ferndale Police Department, made contact with the victim at the scene of the crime, obtained essential information that aided in the arrest of these suspects. Officer Collette and Officer Cleveland performed evidence processing over the consecutive shifts over the next two days that resulted in the collection of evidence that directly led and tied the suspects to the crime. Deputy Marsban located the shell casing from the round that was fired by one of the suspects after a diligent and systematic search. Deputy Marsban and Deputy Murray, also here this evening, also secured a crime scene on Pearson for us so that Ferndale officers could properly process the scene at the arrest of the first contact with the suspects and collect evidence that was left over a several block area. Lieutenant Gary Whiting, who is on the desk this evening, Dispatchman McDonald, also at the rear of the room, and Cadet Cordova provided accurate and timely dispatch information and coordinated the police response that directly led to the arrest of the suspects. Lieutenant Whiting and Officer Spellman were able to contain a confession from one of the suspects, as well as a statement describing how his accomplice had shot at the victim. Officer Spellman and Officer Cleveland demonstrated an exceptional use of tactics and skill in apprehending the suspects. Both officers put their safety into extreme jeopardy in the apprehension of these two dangerous armed and determined criminals. All of the officers involved acted in a professional and a team-oriented manner that directly led to the capture of these dangerous suspects and showed no willingness, who had shown a willingness to kill." So, at this time, I'd like to call forward Officers Dave Spellman and Officer John Cleveland. Lieutenant Whiting, I hope will be here in a moment, Sergeant Baron Brown, and Officer Lastly, if we could have Oakland County Deputy Marsban and Deputy Murray show up. Also, I'd like to point out that their boss, Sergeant Gardner, in the back of the room, also showed up as support. This is a shining example of how our department works so well with Oakland County. Also, the coordinated effort that the officers put together, not only just at the scene of the crime when the man was, when the two men were arrested, but also the backfill that they did with all the detective work and the evidence tech work, as well as the coordination with these, with the fellow deputies. It was just a great job, and two very bad men are now off the streets, thanks to these gentlemen.
Very nice job, Chief Collins. Thank you kindly, and thanks very much to the members of our county sheriff's office, as well as the Ferndale Police. The people of Ferndale hold you in high esteem and with much gratitude. Madam Clerk. Yes, they do. Thank you again, very, very much. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
A presentation from the Downtown Development Authority.
Very good. Do we have the DDA here tonight? I'm not seeing Chris or Christina. They may be on their way. In any case, if they arrive late, Madam Clerk, we'll allow them to do their presentation.
Certainly.
They certainly did a great job last week with the installation of the new memorial downtown for Vincent Chin. We'll address that in a little bit. Madam Clerk, what would the next item be, then?
We'll have a presentation from Scott Seidel of Essex Homes on a LEED project here in the city.
Yes, we do. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Council, Mayor, for having us here tonight to talk about 82 West Lewiston. This is a team effort here. We have a property owner that has relocated back to Ferndale. He used to live here before, and it's nice to have somebody coming back to town instead of leaving the state, as we all are aware of. We have a realtor here that's involved with finding properties that need to be rehabilitated and revitalized and using green technology and product along the way. And my name is Scott Seidel. I'm with Essex Homes, a co-owner. We've built over 100 homes of single-family residences and remodel, as well as barrier-free homes. The purpose here tonight is just to bring awareness to the project. The project is a single-family home that we're going to revitalize it. It's abandoned, it's in disrepair. We're going to enlarge the home, add a garage, keep the green space as it is right now. We're also going to make it energy-efficient and using some of the green products, the environmentally-friendly products that are becoming more readily available these days. And with that, we have, the next slide here is the, I call it the patient. This is the home. She's a little sick, but we're going to bring her back to life. We're going to add a little bit of space to it and really bring it back into, using what we call LEED technology or LEED construction. LEED construction is the implementation of, from beginning to middle to end, of the life of a home. It is not just tearing it down and utilizing raw land and rebuilding. It is taking an existing structure, whether it's down to its skeleton or its bones, and utilizing local labor, materials, utilizing renewable, sustainable product, as well as product that is performance. As a builder, we look at things that are proven, and although new technology is new, it is really becoming more mainstream, which is important, and performance matters at the end of the day. It's also financially responsible. Instead of taking this house down and leveling it and filling up six, seven dumpsters and an acre of landfill, we're going to just take what we have, improve upon it, and utilize what's there. And you'll see in the picture, there's some railings and sheet metal and different things. We're going to, those will all go back into the house in different areas of the home, in the yard area, and we're going to recycle that on-site. We're certainly going to bring new in, but it's also going to utilize what's there. And the whole concept here is to take something that's kind of an interesting, unique concept, and just making it every day, and that we all do. So it doesn't have to be more expensive, it just has to be more commonplace. The community benefits at three levels, I see it as. From the street level, we're looking at just making it a nicer home for the neighborhood. The people in the neighborhood that have been invested in their home are going to benefit from that and enjoy that. Folks may be deciding to upgrade their home as well. So there's going to be that pull, if you will, when they see new construction happening. And on top of that, with the previous presentation, we'll have less crime because there'll be an occupied home. People will be living there, taking care of it. At the city level, of course, we're just going to add a little bit to what you guys have already done as a city that has a reputation for revitalizing its commercial structures, its residential streets. We're just going to add to what hopefully will attract new residents to new construction. It's not a subdivision of 100 homes, it's one house, but it is one house, one street at a time. And at the state level, of course, all about taxes. As they get assessed, values go up. Hopefully, it will trickle down to our local funding needs for fire, police, EMS. And with that, that just breeds success, and green building becomes a practical, affordable, everyday, applicable method that suppliers and builders like myself and homeowners, if they demand it, it will happen. And so you'll see it out there, it's happening. So with that, I just want to thank you for your time tonight. I know it's the end of the year and it's the last one, but we just want to say that we hope to add to what Ferndale has done through its reputation of green and LEED construction, and we want to just add to what the area of a wonderful work-to-live community is. So, thank you for your time and happy new year.
Thank you for the work you're doing and your company, Mr. Seidel. Let's give Mr. Seidel a round of applause. Madam Clerk, what's next?
Call to audience, Your Honor.
Call to audience. We will include a 30-minute portion of the meeting. It is now 14 minutes till, which means we could go as long as 16 after, if there's that many folks who wish to speak. Our rules are three-minute limit. Please be courteous and state your name and address, written or verbal, in the back. And anything that's not on the agenda is fair game to talk about this evening.
Good evening, Mayor, and Senator Thompson. My name is Dennis Hapner. I live at 760 Flower Hill. Tonight, I would like to address my comments to our outgoing mayor, this being his last council meeting. He first sworn in as our new county commissioner. Mayor, it has been an honor and a privilege to have worked on your different campaigns for office, especially since you ruined every campaign I've worked on. And of course, the emerald stuffy was a ball. Let's not forget the homes. You have been a good councilman and a great mayor. You have been a great ambassador for the city of Ferndale, and I know that you will continue to be so. Ferndale's loss is Oakland County's gain. For all that you have done for Ferndale, I would like to applaud you, and I hope the citizens here tonight feel the same way.
Ann Heller, 1024 Leroy. First of all, speaking this time as the president of the Ferndale Care Free Clinic, and I am here to tell you that today at 10 o'clock, we signed the lease at 459 East Nine Mile. We will be in the building shortly. We can't believe it, I am walking about 10 feet off the floor, but we will be in the building. The Ferndale Care, you know, is open. We opened August 7. We're open the first and third Saturdays of every month. From our first date of being open, August 7, until now, we have always been three months out in appointments. We are currently filled through March. The need is great. We had been told it was great by everyone, and we absolutely are agreed with that. People are in desperate need for care. At the next meeting, I hope, well, no, in two meetings from now, in February, I will have the results of our six-month review and evaluation, so I will be able to give you some more details about our patients and about the clinic flow and efficiency and all of the information that we're all waiting to hear, just who are these patients that come to the clinic. The clinic has been going very well. We are now, it's a set-up, tear-down clinic. As you probably know, I want you to know that the set-up team now can set this clinic up in 35 minutes. It's incredible. We see patients from 9 to 12, and then we do our tear-down and debriefing from 12 to 1 on those Saturdays. I have to give just everything and thank yous to the Kulik community staff that has just done so much to make us welcome and to help make these rooms habitable for a clinic as opposed for yoga or anything else. They have just been wonderful. They've bent over backwards to help us, but I just thought everybody would like to know that 459 East Nine Mile building is about to be occupied by the clinic. Yes, this is pretty exciting.
Congratulations.
Thanks. And also, also just to say to the mayor, thank you, thank you for all these years. And one of the things that we will remember, of course, is your continued advocacy for the gay, lesbian, bisexual, and transgender community, just using that always as a demonstration of the kinds of things that can be done when diversity and honesty and being calm and talking about things happens. And when we continue to do that, we can all live together seamlessly and, we hope, happily in the community. Thank you for keeping that in mind as you, as you through councilman and then to mayor. We look forward to you and the council at Oakland County.
Before you sit down, Ann Heller, how many years have you lived in Ferndale?
Since 1981.
You are an absolute hero to this city, and allow me to say one more time up here that all of your work in the 25 years that I've known you, through Fans of Ferndale, through the human rights work, through the historical work that you do in the last several years, Yeoman's work with the Ferndale Free Health Clinic, you are an amazing person, and the city is better off because of you and all of your volunteers.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. Thomas Gagne, 360 West Woodland. Real quickly, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank you for all you've done for the city, and I want to remind you, you may not know this, but you were actually the first politician I ever spoke to in person. Like, actually, you and Bob Porter, remember, when you were campaigning for your first city council run, you stopped by our house on Woodland, and I was so impressed that someone from local government would take the time to stop by my house to talk to us. I think we invited you into our dining room, we had a much longer conversation than I suspect you anticipated, going door-to-door. But I want to thank you for taking that time with us and definitely for showing me what local politics was about, getting out and knocking on doors. I want to thank you for your advice, for your care, for your wisdom, for your kind words, for your fair play, and for your friendship, and for everything you've done for the community. Thank you very much and good luck up in Oakland County.
Back at you, Tom Gagne. Appreciate you and your family.
I'm so sorry to see you go. The city has grown so much under your leadership, Mayor, and I'm thrilled to have been part of this growth. You've been a wonderful mayor, as well as a wonderful friend, and you've really done Ferndale proud. You've organized and participated in just about every event that helps make Ferndale cool, and I just want you to know, you're leaving your fingerprints all over Ferndale, as well as all over our hearts. Thank you.
That's very sweet. Thank you, Jeannie. Just so people know, if you've watched the news in the last couple of days, you saw the craziness in New York City with the winter storms and the airports. Jeannie Davis, as of yesterday afternoon, was stuck at one of those airports, and we're so glad, we're so glad you made it. Well, you made it home, but you could have been stuck like the rest of us, so we're glad you're safe and back.
I went to the theater instead.
All right. Well, Michigan people know how to deal with snow and ice, so you were fine, but thank you for your kind words.
Hi, Julia Music, 497 West Troy Street. I've told you this story before, Mr. Mayor, but I'd like to repeat it for the record, and I will not look at you so that I can try to keep my composure. The day after you took, won the mayor campaign, I went into work, I work at a middle school, and one of my students skipped into my room and said, "Hey, Ms. Music, congratulations on your new mayor." And I said, "Well, thank you very much." And he said, in this kind of flippant, 12-year-old tone that I'm used to, "You know he's gay, right?" And I said, "Well, actually, I do. I worked on his campaign and I also voted for him." Even though I'm not supposed to say that at school, I threw in the voted-for him part. And he looked at me very seriously, right in the face, and said, "Thank you." And so I want to thank you for being, I told you, if I looked at you, I'd lose it. I want to thank you for being an out person in our community, because it really does a lot for our children. And I know it did something for that child, and I know that there are other children watching you, and I just appreciate your honesty, because it looks, it gives our kids someone to look up to, who's a positive role model. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. It's going to be one of those love fest meetings. Thank you. I don't see anyone else coming forward, so we can move on to the next item on the agenda. Madam Clerk.
Your Honor, that would be the consent agenda. Item A, approval of the minutes of the meeting held December 13. Item B, approval to adopt a resolution of condolence for the family of Joseph P. Bennett. Item C, approval to accept the quote from Metro Computer Services of $33,492 for City Hall server consolidation and client workstation upgrades. Item D, approval to adopt Ordinance 1103, which adopts by reference the 2009 edition of the Michigan edition of the International Mechanical Code and revise Article 5, Section 6-83 of the Ferndale Code, and also to adopt Ordinance 1104, which adopts by reference the 2009 edition of the Michigan edition of the International Plumbing Code and revise Article 4, Section 6-69 of the Ferndale Code. Item E, approval to fill the part-time budgeted housing inspector position in the Community Development Department. Item F, approval to issue a pawnbroker's license to be located at 771 East Eight Mile Road, to be held by Mark Aubrey, doing business as Motor City Pawnbrokers III, and to approve two surety bonds, each in the amount of $1,500, contingent upon the noted stipulations submitted by the city clerk. Item G, approval of the Fifth Amendment to the Neighborhood Stabilization Program contract with Home Renewal Systems and Michigan LLC, reducing the developer's fee from 20% to 15%. Item H, approval to reappoint Alex Thelak and David Tobart to the Ferndale Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for terms ending December 31, 2013. Item I, approval of the invoice of $3,060 to Rhodes Welding Ferndale for repairing leaf backing number 8335, and to charge the expense to the Vehicle and Equipment Fund. And finally, item J, approval of the bills and payrolls certified by the city manager to be paid, subject to review by the Council Finance Committee.
Well done, Madam Clerk. Thank you. Any items that members of council or the audience would like to pull for further discussion? If not, a motion to adopt the entire consent agenda.
So moved, Your Honor. Support.
Thank you. Councilman Lennon moves, Baker seconds, to adopt the consent agenda in its entirety. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, now.
Councilmembers Galloway.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
Piana. Yes. Baker. And Mayor Cuffin.
Yes, thank you. That passes unanimously. Regular agenda item, Madam Clerk.
That brings us to item A, consideration to appoint Stephanie Lawton to the Planning Commission for a term ending December 31, 2013.
Would anyone like to introduce this item?
Invite Ms. Shear forward to introduce the consideration of appointment to the Planning
Good evening, Marcia Shear.
Good evening, and congratulations on your future.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
You too.
Thank you. As some of you are aware, Tiffany Voorhees has submitted her resignation, or her intent to not seek reappointment at the end of this term for the Planning Commission. We have a number of applications ahead of before you this evening, and Community Development is recommending the appointment of Stephanie Lawton. The reason that we are looking at Ms. Lawton is she replaces Ms. Voorhees in terms of the construction expertise that she will bring to the Planning Commission. We do have representatives of the architectural and planning background, so we would prefer to broaden or to keep the expertise on the commission as broad as possible. So I'd ask that you appoint Stephanie to the commission.
Thank you, Ms. Shear. I concur with that as well. Is there any discussion or questions or a motion?
The only question is actually a question that I'm emailing to Greg Parrish right now. His application is one of those that has been kept on file. It's been there since 2008.
Right.
He is in a different job now. I know Greg well, and I think he'd be great on the Planning Commission.
Uh-huh.
But since it's been, you know, at least two years since his application was put in, I think Stephanie is definitely the best fit right now. But I will ask Greg if he thinks he might want to join at some point in the future.
Absolutely. I did see his application as well, and I think he also would make a fine member of the commission. If there is no other discussion, then perhaps a motion and second.
Your Honor, I move to appoint Stephanie Lawton to the Planning Commission for a term ending December 31, 2013.
Thank you, Councilman Lennon. Motions, and Baker seconds that. Discussion, Madam Clerk.
Councilmembers Lennon.
I'm sorry.
You have a question.
I'm sorry.
Yes. Sherri Wells of 315 West Troy. I would just like to make the observation that when I saw this on the agenda, I went to the city council website, the boards and commissions part, and the only boards and commissions showing openings is, again, still, the Beautification Commission, the environmental one, and the Cultural Arts. This one was not listed on that website, so apparently, again, any people have to be already on the inside to know what openings are coming up, and that's still slipping through. Thank you.
Thank you. And as I mentioned, I think it's wise for anyone interested in serving on any board or commission to go ahead and get their application in. Vacancies come and go, people do resign or for other reasons have to leave, and so that's one way to get your application in, like Mr. Parrish.
And we clearly do keep them on file.
Sure. But thank you for pointing that out. We do try or will try to get those on the website at all times. Madam Clerk, now.
Councilmembers Lennon.
Yes.
Piana. Yes. Baker. Yes. Galloway. Yes. And Mayor Cuffin.
Yes, that passes unanimously. Item B, Madam Clerk.
That is consideration of a proposal from That is consideration of a proposal from Colano and Saha Engineers for noise ordinance consulting services.
Okay, Mr. Brunner, will you introduce?
Yeah, thanks, Your Honor. Back in November, the council reviewed and considered three proposals from engineering firms to review the city's noise ordinance. At that time, the council indicated that it wanted to retain Colano and Saha Engineers to conduct two of the three phases of work that they had included in their initial proposal. That proposal's been revised to reflect only the items that were in the scope of work of the two phases that council wanted to conduct, so that revised proposal is now presented for your consideration.
Well, thank you, sir. What questions or requests for information would council members want?
Is there a representative of the firm here?
I think not.
Well, I guess my request is in the scope of work section, and since it's not a representative from the company here, I'll direct it towards the city manager. The proposal says that what the firm's going to do is review noise ordinance for technical language and content, consistency, applicable standards, and usability. It discusses ways to improve the ordinance and, let's see here, provide various methods and criterias that applicants would use to demonstrate that the applied use will comply with the noise ordinance. And I think what I'm looking for from this study is really a determination of how we handle amplified music in the downtown area. I'm not worried about people making noise when we have, you know, a big festival downtown. I'm not interested in the special land use that operates for one or two days. I'm concerned about the day-in and day-out that citizens have to put up with, and how do we address amplified music at what seem to be the three, you know, at different points within the downtown, but recently, Rosie's, Buffalo Wild Wings, and Viennove. And so what I'm looking for, city manager, is recommendations as how we can get that under control. Is it your belief that this scope of work is sufficient to give us specific, actionable steps to tell the business owners in the noise ordinance to address the problems?
I believe it does. One of the things that we discussed last time that this was on the agenda was the potential for some kind of new licensing procedure for outdoor amplification. And I think the scope of work addresses that in numbers three and four, where it talks about recommendations on improving the noise ordinance in three, and also recommended changes in four to explore methods by which applicants for special approval for amplify sound. And so I believe that's what that's referring to, is some kind of licensing procedure for outdoor amplification. City Attorney Crist was the person who actually discussed the scope of work directly with Colano and Saha, so I'd ask him to weigh in on that issue, if that's something that came up in your conversations with him.
Through the chair, Councilman, I think they understand the concern, and I think once they start to undertake their review, that they understand that the amplified noise in the CBD principally with respect to certain establishments is the concern of council, and that's what they're prepared to weigh in on. They didn't go into the specific proposal or solution at this time, but I think that the revised proposal's consistent with council's direction. I mean, we can certainly clarify that scope of work that you're stating this evening, but I think it's covered. There would be an opportunity for the consultants to meet with administration, to delve into the concern in more detail once, or should council decide to proceed with this proposal.
And I think the ordinance committee, as led by yourself, Dan, has done a pretty good job of surveying other communities and how they handle noise ordinances. And, you know, that's not what I'm looking for from this study. I want to have actionable items such as, you know, amplification in outdoor patios shall not exceed or should not exceed certain power levels, or the speakers should be of this type to disperse the sound, or they should be directed towards, you know, a certain type of material or have coverings on them. Or maybe the recommendation comes back that, you know, outdoor amplified music within 500 feet of residents is just, there's no way to make it so that it doesn't disturb the people. We need to have that type of information, not a survey that says, "Of the 35 communities that have sound ordinances, we surveyed them, and the 8-decibel rating after 10 o'clock on average is 65." That's no good for us. So we need to have, you know, steps that don't deal with measurements but that deal with the source rather than, you know, I guess, the passive or measurement from the resident's household. And the scope of work also describes meet with representatives of the city of Ferndale. And I think it's really critical that the engineering firm meet with city council members or the mayor to get the sense of what the concerns are and what we're looking for and what's going to be helpful to us. So sometimes these studies just, you know, meet with staff, and I think on this one, given the length of time it's been going on, a couple of council people need to speak with the engineering firm as well.
If I could, I mean, they are proposing this proposal as a time and materials proposal. So to the extent that they have estimated a number of hours with respect to accomplishing the goals set forth in the proposal, to the extent that it's less, they're going to build the city less. So I think that the opportunity for council members and city staff to express the specific concerns you've just noted will help tailor exactly how much work they will potentially need to undertake.
Yeah, that'd be great. I mean, maybe we could have an ordinance committee meeting with the engineering firm before they get too deep into it to make them fully aware of what the concerns have been and the solutions we're looking for.
Through the chair, the proposal specifically anticipates two in-person meetings for the number of hours with the scope of work item number one being to meet with city officials. So if there are council members that are interested in participating in that, I would suggest that if the council does approve this proposal, let it go ahead and designate two people to participate in that meeting, whether it's the ordinance committee or some other two people. That would prevent it from, you know, having a quorum present and having to have an open meeting, but would provide the council an opportunity to have that input.
I would like to raise my hand to be one of those council people.
Great idea. That could be and should possibly be in the motion, so what do you think, Councilman Galloway? Do you want to?
Well, I'll be one of the people, too, and I'll try my hand at a motion here. I would move that we approve the proposal submitted by Colano and Saha Engineers Incorporated dated December 21, 2010, and authorize the execution of that agreement by the mayor, and that council appoint Galloway and Piana as council representatives to meet with Colano and Saha Engineers early in their work on behalf of the city.
Support.
Thank you, Councilman. And you included Councilwoman Galloway yourself.
Thank you.
It's a great idea, Mr. Manager. The motion was made by Galloway, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Baker. Any discussion?
Just one final comment is that in addition to solving some of these pain points that we're experiencing now in the downtown and in the residential areas, this is also why I'm supporting this, is also putting together a standard for, hopefully, that will have longevity of a decade to handle any new businesses that are coming in and set, just to face a new standard. So that's what I wanted to say.
Very well. Any other discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Sherri Wells again. Is my question is that if any of the residents have any concerns, then assuming this motion passes, we would express them to Piana and Galloway, and they would bring them to that table for us?
Representatives, yes.
That would be our method? All right.
Yes.
That sounds good. Thank you.
Absolutely.
You can email them to me. You can email them to me.
I'm Lowell Rod at 771 East Eight Mile Road, Ferndale, Michigan. I listened to the scope of this discussion about noise, and I realize the fact that it has a very narrow, broad, a very narrow scope in the fact that it deals with recorded music in a small designated area. I don't know if you're aware of it or not, but in the late evening hours and early morning hours, the truck traffic that goes around the corner at Fair and Eight Mile Road is, in a lot of cases, very noisy. I have tenants that live there in that area on Bennett Street, and I think if they had something in the ordinance that would address that problem, it would be very beneficial for my tenants. A lot of times, it's brake squealing, it's downshifting of the gears, it's enough to jolt you out of bed if you really don't get used to it. I've been there several times in late evening hours and just kind of felt chagrined about the fact of, well, there's nothing going to be done about this. It's just a matter of fact. The railroad operates 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and their attempt to mitigate this has been very minimal at best. They have, you know, they have the railroad police who look for theft from the railroad, but the railroad police doesn't, does nothing in regards to how truck drivers control their rigs going around that corner. It was very accommodating to allow the highway department to take land from my property so that the intersection could be made more efficient and therefore trucks could go around the corner with greater ease. In doing so, the speed of the trucks now increased. Had I not done that in hindsight, I would have realized that the rigs would have slowed down considerably, and therefore I wouldn't hear nearly as much noise. But hindsight is, if you could all live off of hindsight, that would be great. But I just wanted to call to your attention, if you are dealing with noise, it's an area of the city that needs some attention. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. As a matter of fact, the noise ordinance does include a section on industrial areas, so.
I'd like them to apply.
Let's get a copy of that to the gentleman, and there may be things that could be done. Anyone else? All right, Madam Clerk. Do we, we have a motion?
We have a motion. For some reason, my software isn't being able to. Are we ready to vote?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmembers Piana.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Galloway.
Yes.
Lennon.
No.
And Mayor Covey.
Yes, that motion passes. Thank you kindly. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Regular agenda item C, consideration of Traffic Improvement Association membership.
Mr. Brunner, will you start, and then punt to whoever else might want to address this issue?
Sure, Your Honor. I'll invite Mr. Fatidis up to introduce this item while he's making his way to the podium. I remind folks that the city council has been discussing the city's membership in Traffic Improvement Association since last year's budget process. There's been a presentation from the TIA. Since the last time it came to council, our new traffic control officer, Paul Simpson, has conducted quite a bit of research on this issue and is requesting that the council renew the membership, and I believe he's also here tonight.
No.
No. Okay. But anyway, Mr. Fatidis.
Thank you, Bob. Through the chair, council. As the city manager stated, we've been going on a year without a traffic consultant. The council did refer this back to administration for further study. The city's engineering consultant, Kiffelson Webster, did a RFP and solicited some prices from a traffic consultant that they've done a lot of work with in the past, not only, well, not in Ferndale, but with some of their clients. And that proposal came back, a little over $20,400 for two high-profile projects that we want to undertake for study, the Nine Mile Allen Intersection and the Libranoy Nine Mile Intersection. And then on top of that, a retainer fee of $6,900 or $575 a month. We went back with that information, reviewed it with the police department, and then we asked TIA to come back. We spoke with someone new from TIA. We asked that a presentation be given and that council reconsider TIA for 2011, and Jim Santini is here to give that presentation. And if we have any questions, I hope we can answer some. Jim can, and the police chief is here to answer any questions regarding the need for his department to have some consulting services.
Thank you.
Just want to thank Honorable Mayor Covey and also the council members and the staff of Ferndale for having me present tonight. Again, my name is Jim Santilli. With the Traffic Improvement Association, I'm the coordinator of information technology, public relations, and traffic safety services. Basically, to start off, TIA was organized in 1967 by government leaders and also corporate leaders to address an abundance of traffic fatalities that were taking place here in Oakland County. The mission of TIA is to facilitate engineering, education, and enforcement programs that reduce human and economic losses caused by traffic crashes and improve mobility in Our board of directors consists of governments and corporate leaders. They range from local government leaders, county government leaders, and we also have corporate leaders from industries such as the Big Three. Our chair, she's actually vice president of safety from Ford Motor Company. And this is in a packet, I believe, you guys received?
Yes.
Okay. We also have our advisory board, which consists of Oakland County Sheriff, the county executive, and various other individuals. Our staff, we have a traffic engineer on board. He's licensed through the state of Michigan. His name's Dave Allen, and previously, he was a director of traffic safety at the Road Commission for Oakland County. I included his biography here, as you can see, as an abundance of experience with traffic safety. We also have other individuals. Jerry Walker, he used to work for the city of Wald Lake. He was the police chief, city manager, and fire chief there, and he's been involved in traffic safety for some time. Eileen Wise-McKaysak, she coordinates the law enforcement grants, which I'll get more into. And then myself, I do our, again, our IT. So with that, our traffic crash program, our PR, and our traffic safety. Basically, just a little bit about our traffic safety services. Crash data, that's something that the Traffic Improvement Association has worked on for some time, and increasing that availability to the communities, getting it processed quicker, so the communities could use this information, meaning law enforcement agencies and also DPWs and the road commission. This information is vital to improving traffic safety. So what we now have, with technology advancing, we have a system called the Traffic Crash Analysis Tool, or as we refer to it, TCAT 2.0. It's a newer version. It's a web-based program that any community can use that's a member of TIA. The police departments generally use it and also the DPWs. You can go on there, you can do various things such as look at particular crashes at an intersection. You can look at it by date or other variables. If you want to look at pedestrian crashes, bicycle crashes, you can do that for intersections, you can do it for road segments. You can search basically by any field that's on the UD-10, which is the State of Michigan Traffic Crash Report. So if you want to look at maybe specifics like day of the week, time of day, you know, you can do that as well. You can look at different injuries, you know, if you want to. You can look at different injuries, you know, if you want to just look for fatal crashes, pretty much anything you're looking for, you can obtain in the system. It also has ranking reports in there, which rank the intersections and road segments based on crash frequency, which takes into account severity with injuries and fatalities and also traffic volume. It has a mapping feature in there that allows you to map traffic crashes and get kind of a better view as to where problems may be within a particular jurisdiction. It also does collision diagrams that you can do for an intersection. Basically, they're drawings. It's an engineering diagram. It's a different drawing that shows the different types of traffic crashes taking place, and a lot of times, an engineer can look at that and say, okay, maybe there's a specific problem and, you know, what's creating that problem. Education, we do a lot of different things. We host an Early Birds Traffic Safety Seminar. Basically, what that is, you know, when I started, I kind of laughed because I said, you know, they talked about that people get together at about 7:00 a.m. to discuss traffic safety. And I was surprised that that is the case. Usually, they have a couple hundred individuals that show up from the law enforcement community, public works, the road commission, and also from the state of Michigan. And everybody gets together and discusses traffic safety, and various presentations are made pertaining to vehicles, road improvements, pedestrian and bicycle safety. We also have mature driver workshops that we host in different areas, mainly in Oakland County, and we also host them around the state of Michigan as well. Enforcement, what we do, the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration passes money down to the different states, and here in Michigan, the Michigan Office of Highway Safety Planning receives those funds, and they distribute it to counties. We actually receive the money for Oakland County and distribute that to different law enforcement agencies for programs such as Click It or Ticket, You Drink and Drive You Lose, and other grant programs that the federal government wants to see take place. So that's something we provide to law enforcement agencies, obviously, here in Oakland County. Traffic engineering, that's one of our biggest services we offer. With that, we'll work with our member communities, we'll provide traffic engineering assistance, anything traffic safety related. So whether it's regarding an intersection, a road segment, we'll do sign analysis, speed evaluation, so if there's a resident complaining, you know, about a speed problem on the street, we can set up a traffic counter unit that will actually record the traffic speeds for as much time as you want it recorded, and then we can go back and do a study, see if there's an issue, and whether it warrants law enforcement or some traffic engineering improvements. We look at signs, you know, to see if they're warranted signals. So again, anything traffic safety related pertaining to engineering, we conduct those services. And with that, obviously, we use crash data as well, you know, to conduct the analysis. So if there's a particular problem at an intersection, you know, we'll look at the crash data and then decide, you know, where to go from there. Basically, our services are available, you know, as much as they are needed. So, you know, if someone from the city contacts us, you know, we'll get our traffic engineer and another representative, you know, to address it immediately. Generally, what we'll do is come out to the community, we'll meet with them, we'll go out to the area that's of concern, and we'll conduct some studies, and then we'll provide a report, whether it's to the staff or the city council. One of the things I did is I implemented a new system recently, so anytime a staff member at TIA has contact with a community, they'll go into our database, log that contact, and it's going on a, basically, a summary sheet. So we can provide any city a summary of our services provided for that year. So that's something we can provide to the city manager, the DPW director, and the council if needed. So. Any questions?
Mr. Santelli?
Yes.
Would you consider the Traffic Improvement Association an engineering firm?
We're a nonprofit, so that's how we're organized. We, traffic engineering is our main service. We don't do specific design work, but what we do is address anything traffic safety related, so we make recommendations.
So one of the requests that our police department has made to us to seek your assistance in is redesign of Nine Mile and Livernoy and redesign of Nine Mile and Pinecrest. So if we were to retain your services, what would you be doing for us? Now, your website says that your mission statement is to facilitate engineering. So do you work with an engineer to design those sites? Do you do it yourself? What does facilitate engineering services mean?
Well, generally, what we'll do in that situation, Claussen's a good example, they had a problem with an intersection, they were working on design. So we go out there, in that situation, we met with the city manager, the DPW director, and the police chief, and also their traffic engineering firm that they use, and we provided recommendations to that firm, you know, that was working on the design pertaining to traffic safety. You know, it depends on the situation, obviously, you know, but anything related to pedestrian safety, bicycle safety, vehicle safety, you know, or when you're designing an intersection, obviously, you're taking all that into account, so yes, we provide.
So would you conduct a study of Nine Mile and Livernoy, and then based upon your study, offer recommendations, or?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so they're not sort of like canned, you know?
No. I mean, what, general, yes, we'll conduct the study and then use that data to provide a recommendation, but we'll also provide an expert recommendation based on years of experience by your traffic engineer with, you know, redesign of different intersections.
So if we're going to redesign these two intersections, your services alone are not going to be sufficient for us to get a redesign? Is that correct?
To actually have it redesigned?
Yeah. If we're going to have new intersections at Nine Mile and Livernoy and Nine and Pinecrest and, you know, Allen or wherever, your services alone are not sufficient for us to get that job done, is that correct?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I phrased that poorly. Are we going to have to hire a Giffleson Webster or to assist you in that?
You know, I'm not, yeah, you probably know better.
Just as we did improvements on Nine Mile where we narrowed it down, we came up with the design through Giffleson Webster, and we had TIA review it. They're not going to design it, but they're going to give us input on what we think we would like to do there.
And then the input will be, traffic volumes for this type of design pose a certain kind of problem, or?
You know, traffic volumes, we would look at that, obviously, and then various other factors. It kind of depends on the intersection you're looking at, but, you know, again, we would go out there, our engineers would, and conduct various studies, you know, first starting with traffic volume. They'll look at traffic crash history for that intersection, you know, for the previous three years, and then also go back, maybe even as far as 10 years, see if there's a specific problem, and then make a recommendation, you know, stating, okay, this is the problem we have, and this is how we feel that it can be resolved. So they will provide a recommendation stating, you know, if needed, obviously, this is the design that we feel could correct this situation and improve safety in the community and at that location.
For example, Nine Mile, you've got parking bays on both sides. The original design for that was to have parking on the south side. We weren't intending to have parking, it was going to be a three-lane road. And then we reevaluated it, and we said, well, let's see if we can put parking on both sides, because the concern was that we were going to be pushing traffic into the residential area. We ran that by TIA. TIA says, I think it's workable. So we had a design, we reevaluated it, and it became very successful, because we, you know, TIA put its blessing on having parking on both sides, when you can imagine what Nine Mile would look like had we just stayed with the original concept, because we were concerned about traffic being pushed into the residential area. And they, at that time, James wasn't here, but I was involved in that project, and they said that they thought it was workable. And it's been a bonus to the city. So that's how the process, that's the first time I was involved in a project, but that was a major decision the city made. And we went ahead with the design based on their recommendation.
I have a question, if I may. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
At the end of your presentation, you mentioned that your organization can provide to the city a list of the projects and things that it helped with and consulted with. And a year or two ago, when the city council during a budget crunch decided not to renew its membership, one of the reasons was that the presenters had no documentation of any projects or things that they had worked on for Ferndale. Did you?
Recent, recent.
Yeah, this was a recent implementation that I added just because of that situation and other situations.
So we still don't, we don't have anything that shows what the TIA did for us in previous years?
No. Like I said, you know, I know that individual that used to work closely with Ferndale, he actually left TIA, so, you know, I don't know specifically what he did, you know, we can, I think Jerry, our president, went back to some files and pulled those.
One other question, and I, again, I'm impressed with your presentation.
Thank you.
One of the things that some of us on the council wanted for years was to try and reinstate a crosswalk on Woodward Avenue, but weren't getting much support particularly from the state, MDOT. Is that something that the TIA can work on and advise?
Yes, definitely.
Does your recommendation carry any weight?
You know, we, and that's one of the neat things about TIA, we work closely with the state of Michigan, meaning MDOT, the state police and whatnot, so, you know, we're used to working with those individuals, we can do studies and coordinate with them and, you know, try to make a recommendation. That's not uncommon for us to contact MDOT and make a recommendation, and some, you know, a lot of times, they make changes.
What other questions would council members like to request from our representative tonight?
Thank you for your presentation tonight.
Oh, thank you.
And following up on some of our outstanding issues that we've had with the TIA. One question I have, and I guess it's more for the police chief and the DPW director, is we have been without your services with the year for year now, and I'm wondering what projects haven't been able to move forward without yours, since we aren't using your services, since, so I was just wondering what has been delayed or not started, or how else, how are we surviving without them?
Well, it's not, we are surviving without them, but it would have been much easier doing some of the things that we have been doing. The traffic control officer right now is making a very aggressive review of some of the traffic control devices and signs that are in our community that have been there for years that nobody really knows why. And to have the resources to call up TIA to find out if this particular sign or this particular signal is warranted would quarter the amount of time that we've been spending on research and whether or not some of these things are appropriate to add, which, if you look at Horton and Street where it forks off, we've just put a stop sign there, because nobody could figure out why there wasn't one there, so we had to do a traffic study to find out what the traffic flow was. This could have all been done through TIA, but we did it ourselves. There's a group of flashing signals in the city that we're looking at to wonder why they're there and for what purpose to maintain them, Camborne and Paxton being one, and all up and down Camborne Street. So we're looking at, with TIA, we could do, so there's many things we could do much more quickly with the assistance of a traffic engineer.
I also do want to say thank you for Traffic Control Officer Paul Simpson for doing a very thorough review to get us to this point. It looks like there are a lot of investigations internally had to be done to figure out what had been done.
He's been doing an excellent job actually reviewing many of the things that have been ignored for quite some time, actually, so we're slowly but surely working our way through it.
And then, one final question. I know you are a Traffic Improvement Association, but the city of Ferndale recently passed a complete streets ordinance, and I was wondering what the TIA's philosophy was on complete streets?
You know, we're, obviously, we support, you know, the pedestrian and bicycle safety initiatives, and actually, I know Ferndale comes up quite a bit. I'm on the governor's Traffic Safety Advisory Commission's pedestrian and bicycle safety team, and Ferndale comes up quite a bit as being a pedestrian and bicycle friendly community. So we support that, you know, we try to work with different communities with the complete streets, and, you know, we've done things with safe routes to school and other initiatives, so. Yeah, you know, basically, our services, you know, are relying on city staff contacting us, so as much as you want to use us, I mean, we're available, so.
Very good. Any other questions? Maybe we can get the lights back on and see if there is a possible.
Well, I'm up here, I just want to congratulate you and.
Thank you, sir.
Wish you the best of luck.
With you in the county.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you. Any other questions, or?
I would move to approve the city's 2011 membership with the Traffic Improvement Association and to charge the expense of $6,100 to the Major Streets Fund Membership End dues account number 202-000958.
Report seconded by Councilman Leonard, a motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Baker to adopt that motion. Further discussion?
I guess, you know, we spend a lot of time kicking this around, and, you know, it's not entirely clear to me why, you know, that, why we can't do some of the things without TIA, but it does seem to create some efficiencies in the police department that's, you know, getting smaller all the time. But I'd certainly like to have some sort of report out as to what you did, all right? Last time you presented to us, it was embarrassing, I was embarrassed for the presenters who came up here, were asking us to hire them, and had no concept of what had been done in the last 20 years for the city of Ferndale. That led me to believe that you didn't do anything for the city, and we were just sending $6,100 just to, you know, for no good reason. So based on the chief's request, a recommendation, the traffic officers, I'm going to support this, but I'm going to be very unhappy if the next time this comes up and we ask for a report as to what you did, if someone shows up here and says, well, geez, you know, we helped do something at State Fair in Eight Mile 25 years ago. That's not acceptable, so.
I totally agree, and you have my word that we will have that report every year for you.
So, yeah, that would, I mean, that'd be great to have one page saying, we helped with these 17 projects and did these three studies and.
Very good. Any other comments? Then, Madam Clerk.
Councilmembers Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Piana?
No.
And Mayor Covey.
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion passes. Thank you kindly. What's next, Madam Clerk?
Regular agenda item D, consideration of proposal from the Michigan Municipal League for the city manager search services.
Thanks, Your Honor. Back at the last regular council meeting on December 13th, I announced my pending departure in February, and the council directed me to retain the Michigan Municipal League to help conduct the city manager search. The Michigan Municipal League has presented a proposal for your consideration. As you will see, it includes a 12-week timeline that is based upon the first step being an initial meeting with the council. Although no formal action is required on that tonight, I encourage the council to begin discussing and thinking about when it wants to have that initial meeting with the league facilitator, especially in light of the fact that you'll be appointing a new mayor and/or council member soon, so these two projects are kind of on parallel tracks at this point. The proposal also profiles several of the search facilitators that work with the league. Currently, Bob Hamilton and Joyce Parker are available to start in the very near future. I've provided you with information on their background. And again, although no formal action is absolutely required tonight, I suggest that the council begin thinking about which one of those facilitators that it would prefer to work with. And with that, I'll answer any questions anybody might have.
Councilman Galloway?
If, I see the timeline here is a three-month process, and if we, if we go right along there, we're not going to have any overlap with the year tenure here. Can this be compressed at all, or is this the most realistic timeline at the MML?
Well, no, I think this is a realistic timeline for the city manager search, which there won't be any overlap with me and the new city manager. There'll be some, potentially, some overlap between me and the interim city manager that we'll have an opportunity to discuss during the closed session at this point. So my focus in my remaining time. my, my focus in my remaining time here will be transitioning with the interim city manager. So, the, the council could decide to kind of delay beginning the City Manager Search pending the appointment of the mayor or, and/or council member. It could try to accelerate that appointment process in order to start the City Manager Search more quickly, but in either case, I'm not going to be here by the time that.
So, I mean, this would put us right now, right at the beginning of the budget season, if we take this off right along. What is your rec, I mean, should we delay this project for, I'm not sure I agree with this statement, but for two months and get through the budget process with the interim? I mean, if we replace, if we go from an interim to a permanent in the middle of the budget process, that to me seems like sort of unwise approach.
Well, I'll be leaving on February 11th, and so the, the interim manager would take over on the 14th. I think you should plan on having that person here for six months, you know, that would get you through until August, and so the, I, I think even under the kind of most optimistic scenario, you wouldn't have a new city manager in place until probably very near the end or after the, the budget process ends in May, because even a, after this, this process, this 12-week process is over, if, if, if you're hiring someone who's coming from another job, that person may have to give two weeks or 60 days notice as well. So, I, I think in all likelihood, the interim city manager will be at the helm throughout the entire duration of the budget process, but I think that the council should still move quickly to initiate the search as, as soon as feasible.
So, but I guess what I'm thinking is, we'd need to probably get things settled with the officials up here, you know, we should replace Craig before we get too far into this, because a lot of this initial meeting talks about creating a pro, you know, a job profile or recruitment strategy ad language, so while getting an interim in here or, or, you know, starting that process yesterday, I think is a good idea. Getting this process, if we wait until the middle of January or end of January, that may not be such a bad thing, is that?
That's right. I, I think it is important for the council to fill the vacancy first, because the, the search process, the council's involvement in the search process will be very front-loaded. It'll be having the initial meeting with the facilitator, developing a profile for the recruitment, what kind of city manager do we want, and then it's, it's kind of hurry up and wait, then the council won't have much involvement as the jobs posted and you're waiting for applications to come in. Then the next time the council will be, really be involved will be in a meeting with the facilitator to review the applications and select semifinalists. So that's really at the back end, very close to when you're actually making a, a decision. So my advice would be to fill the council vacancy first before having that initial meeting and starting the search process, but whether you want to accelerate the, the schedule for appointing the council member and the mayor in order to accelerate starting the search process, or delaying the beginning of the search process, I think is something that the council should, should consider.
What kind of questions would other council members like to ask? Or comment on, or request?
Well, in sort of building off of what Scott said, basically, regardless if we hold off until we appoint someone to fill the, the council mayor seat, we're really looking at conducting the first interview, even if we delay by, you know, we don't start this until February, we're really going to be conducting our first interviews at the end of March, beginning of April. So, leading up to our May budget vote, so that will all be going on at the same time. And I'm personally okay with that, I have, we're going to have special meetings anyway, work sessions at that time, so I think that's just something we have to plan for.
A question to the city manager, if we decide that we would like to wait to get our full complement of people together up here before having our initial meeting, is there any reason that we shouldn't approve your, the motion this evening? I mean.
No, my, my advice is to approve the, the proposal tonight and.
And schedule the meeting at our.
At your convenience, yeah.
Yeah, I, I concur with the city manager. I realize it seems like, it could seem stressful that there's a lot going on and a lot coming up and a lot you need to do, but I think, in my experience, that the best way to deal with that is to move forward and to start taking actions, so I, I'm not going to get involved too much in this discussion, I just want to encourage you not to, to go ahead and move forward and get who you need up here and, and begin the search for the, we'll talk later about an interim city manager, and I'm very confident that the budget with staff help and the council, some of you have been up here for nine, eight, nine years, everyone else has been up here for several years. So, any other questions?
Yes, oh, yeah, I just want to make sure, we are approving a more open, transparent process in the interview, right? We are going to have, my understanding, when they hired you, there was one interview, and so I think what we're approving tonight is an interview process, an introduction to the city, perhaps a reception, staff will interview the final candidates as well, and have the city manager candidates do a presentation to council where the public is invited.
Yeah, the, the Michigan Municipal League standard search proposal includes basically just bringing the candidates in for interviews with the council, and then that's it. My suggestion, they've included in their proposal some additional activities, such as making public presentations, a, a public reception, meet and greet with the council and staff members. The specifics on those issues of what the council specifically wants to do, again, is something you can decide later with the facilitator, but that is built into their proposal that the city wants not just formal interviews, but some additional activities as well.
Good question, Councilwoman, and yes, you guys get to make all those decisions. Councilman?
And then, one last question for me. Other than the geographic desirability of Mr. Hamilton and Ms. Parker, what guidance can you give us on selecting between the two of them?
Yeah, it's, it's a really tough call, it's a toss-up. They're both started their local government careers in 78, they're both ICMA credentialed managers, they both live about 55 miles from, from Ferndale. Mr. Hamilton has been doing executive searches for the league for longer. Ms., Ms. Parker was, was the city manager of Inkster until recently and is still working as the emergency financial manager in E-course, and just joined the league's executive search team, I believe, earlier this year. But, so her, her search experience with the league is relatively shorter than Mr. Hamilton's, but as a city manager and a local government executive, she has a lot of hiring experience throughout her career.
Well, as one of the folks who worked to hire you, Bob, I was just very displeased with the, the last search firm that seemed to not be too concerned about us and really sort of the process broke down. My preference would be somebody who's been doing this for a long time and perhaps has it sort of down to, you know, well, you know, extra, you know, well-practiced exercise. So, based on your comments, I would think I'd favor Mr. Hamilton.
You could make such a motion.
All right, then I, well, let's see here.
My computer hadn't died, I would make the motion.
Or anyone else could. I liked both candidates, I actually thought they were both excellent, well-qualified.
I would move that we approve the proposal for executive search services from the Michigan Municipal League and request Mr. Hamilton assist us with our search for a new city manager and authorize mayor and city clerk to sign that agreement.
Support. Motion made, seconded, Galloway and Lennon. Discussion. Madam Clerk.
Councilmembers Baker.
Yes.
Galloway.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
Hiana.
Yes.
Mayor Covin.
Yes, passes unanimously. Next item, Madam Clerk.
That brings us to council liaison reports.
Are there any liaison reports tonight? Not seeing any. Next item, Madam Clerk.
That brings us to agenda item nine, resignation of Mayor Covin. A update on the succession process for the vacated office of mayor. That's my item, Your Honor, and if I may, I'm going to turn this over to Monica Mills.
I don't know.
Hi. Craig, you probably thought that we were going to let you leave the meeting without any big hurrah, but of course, that's not going to happen. So we would like you to come down into the audience and have a seat here while we organize a little presentation for you.
Okay.
You're going to have to get used to sitting down here anyway.
That's right.
Do you want me here?
It's right here, it's okay.
You guys are really quiet.
I know. I was asking, they're here, I'm like freaking out. Oh, my phone is, oh. Is someone recording us?
You need to step forward. You need to step forward.
This is awesome.
Mayor Covin, on behalf of Detroit Together Men's Corps, we want to thank you for your years of support. Tonight, we want to sing three songs from our very recent holiday concert, Deck the Halls in Seventy, Still, Still, Still. Oh, time.
(laughing).
(laughing).
(singing) Deck the halls in seventy, fa la 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 la. Jizz, 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 fa la 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 la. Don't be now, I'm gay and fair, fa la 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 la. So, you can't shout, you're tired, fair, fa la 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 la. Oh, see the crazy, you'll be poor, fa la 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 la. Strike the harp and join the chorus, fa la 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 la. Follow me in merry fashion, fa la 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 la. What I tell of you, I treasure, fa la 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 la. Fa la 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 la. That's the way we run, fa la 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 la. Hear the new, hear the glad, fa la 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 la. All the joyous, all together, fa la 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 la. Heatless, all broken, get better, fa la 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 la.
(applause).
For all this ash the world is sleeping, all these stars are keeping. Sleep, 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 is the ear of a savior's fur. Our night is peaceful, all around you. Close your eyes, let's sleep, all around you. Sleep, 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 is the ear of a savior's fur.
(singing) Dream, 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 of the joyous day to come. What are your angels with a lumber? Watch you as you sweetly suffer. Dream, 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 of the joyous day to come.
Oh, heaven, oh, heaven, how great is your platter! You glimpse me, you're a little too summer's sun, your love in this, that is light. Oh, heaven, oh, heaven, how great is your platter!
Oh, Christmas tree, oh, Christmas tree, how lovely are thy branches! Not only green when summer's here, but in the coldest time of year. Oh, Christmas tree, oh, Christmas tree, how lovely are thy branches!
Oh, Christmas tree, oh, Christmas tree, how richly God has made me. Thou fix us true and faithfully, and trust in God unchanging me. Oh, Christmas tree, oh, Christmas tree, how richly God has made me.
Can you guys do that at every meeting?
I don't think she's done with you yet, Mayor. I heard there's a plan.
My name is Anne Huberth, I'm from Royal Oak, and I love Ferndale because Ferndale's a great neighbor, and I met so many wonderful people here, and especially Mayor Craig Covin.
You ready for that? That's all right. You told me, little girl, once upon a time, that I would be yours and you would always be mine, but that's all right. I know you don't love me no more, but that's all right. Every now and then I wonder, who's loving you tonight? Tell me, little girl, what is wrong with you? You don't treat me like you used to do, but that's all right. You don't love me no more, but that's all right. Every now and then I wonder, who's loving you tonight? You told me, little girl, your love for me was strong. When I woke up this morning, my home was gone. That's all right. You don't love me no more, but that's all right. Every now and then I wonder, who's loving you tonight? You told me, little girl, your love for me was strong. When I woke up this morning, my home was gone. That's all right. You don't love me no more, but that's all right. Every now and then I wonder, who's loving you tonight? You told me, little girl, your love for me was strong. When I woke up this morning, my home was gone. That's all right. You don't love me no more, but that's all right. Every now and then I wonder, who's loving you tonight? Now, let's do this, sir. Oh, come together. Yeah. All right. So, we plan. Here comes a flat top, moving up slow. Two, two, five bows, he is one holy road, he said. I love you, and you love me. Gotta be a joker, the boy is so hot to see. Ah, somebody's smiling all over in here. He wears no shoe shine, got toe jam football. Knock it bang, knock it bang, and he count. One and one, and one more is three. Hold your hands long until you feel the disease. Come together, right now, right now, over me. One more. He wears no shoe shine, got toe jam football. Knock it bang, knock it bang, and he count. One and one, and one more is three. Hold your hands long until you feel the disease. Come together, right now, right now, over me. One more. He wears no shoe shine, got toe jam football. Knock it bang, knock it bang, and he count. One and one, and one more is three. Hold your hands long until you feel the disease. Come together, right now, right now, over me. One more. Bobby, I'm sorry, I don't remember the vocalist's name.
Oh, yeah. Wiles Reddy. Wiles Reddy. Wiles Reddy. What a bright job you guys did. Thank you so much. Okay, next, we have a PowerPoint presentation from our DDA.
Hard act to follow. We're here to say a word or two about, I'm not representing the DDA right now, I'm just representing all those people in Ferndale who appreciate our mayor on some level or another. This is for Craig S. Covey, who is a councilman, mayor, civic leader, community activist, the next Oakland County Commissioner. But before moving on, let's have a moment of reflection, please. Although, oops, I lost, a lot of political watchdogs at times questioned Craig Covey's ability to deliver the goods in elections, they were clearly without all the pertinent information. Elected in 1999, reelected in 2003, elected as mayor in 2007, and again in 2009, Craig S. Covey's political career clearly had legs. Some very big, shapely, hairy, sometimes scary legs. He used those legs to take him to the center stage on almost every issue, or at every local festival like Motor City Pride, to lead the Memorial Day Parade, to sit on the DDA board and make sure that the future of Ferndale was on solid ground. Of course, eventually, those legs started taking him to new destinations, and when he started to run with the big boys, well, it was time for some big boy strategy and pants. Putting him in some very powerful political company, and reclaiming some new tactics, like glad had me, and with politicians and friends of every sort, like his future boss, a local gang of movers and shakers, or pretending to enjoy the food prepared by the seniors. Actually, he really did. He really did prepare, enjoy that, or appearing to be interested in information shared at a community forum, and he really was interested, not really pretending. And who could forget this political campaign, event poster that surely did attract a crowd? A very happy crowd to fundraising events, a crowd that had a good time, sometimes too good a time, working for the benefit of many, to prevent and live with AIDS, to help our youth and our community in general. Indeed, for all Craig Covey did as a councilman, a mayor, a civic leader, and mayor, he always wanted to make things in Ferndale better than they'd ever been and as good as they could be. He and Monica were recognized at the DDA for their outstanding efforts for the Blues Festival, the Pub Crow, the Prohibition Party. He was a friend to businesses because he was literally their friend, or simply business friendly. He organized events, he worked the streets. As mayor, he was often a referee for city council, or more likely, a fun, always a good spark for a good time. He steadfastly shared the news about the state of the city, good and bad, and he welcomed people to our city, dream cruisers and others. He was a cheerleader for Ferndale at holiday time or any time, and probably above all, he advocated for others, making sure to tell their story and making sure that the important stories were told and properly commemorated. So, Mayor Craig S. Covey, you didn't just top the top, you rocked the walk. You've got the legs to prove it, and you use them well to accomplish all that you did, and we hope you use them well to accomplish even more and greater things when you move into the bigger arena of Oakland County. Good luck, and thank you for a job well done.
Well, Craig, I think a few others would like to come up and say thank you, and goodbye, and we'll miss you, and I'm not even going to start because I get to see you every day. So, I can move on from this, but there are others that would like to come up and speak.
I don't think I can top the DDA. You know, Ferndale's been fortunate to have great mayors who have done the job of balancing budgets, and Ferndale's been great, has been lucky to have great leaders who work with the community, but rarely are we fortunate enough to have a great mayor who is also a great leader. And so, I just want to thank you for being both for Ferndale and being a mentor to me and so many other people. Thank you.
Well, this was truly a surprise, and I'm just, I'm flabbergasted. I'm just so pleased, and thank you very, very much. Never had 20 men sing to me at one time. And then to have Bobby Murray play the blues is just superb, so thank you, thank you kindly for everybody. It was very, very nice. Madam Clerk, are we ready to go to the next item?
You bet, your honor. We have a presentation of a resolution of appreciation to Mayor Craig Covey.
Councilman Lennon, would you remind me for us?
Yes, I will. I will. Craig Covey was elected to the Ferndale City Council on November 2nd, 1999. Craig Covey was reelected to office by the qualified electors of the city of Ferndale in 2003 for an additional term. Craig Covey was then elected to the office of mayor for two consecutive terms by the voters of the city of Ferndale in '07 and '09. Mayor Covey was elected to the Oakland County Board of Commissioners on November 2nd, 2010, and therefore, he is resigning as mayor of the city of Ferndale. During his 10 years as member of the Ferndale City Council and as mayor of the city of Ferndale, Mayor Covey has served his city and the community as a member of Boning's Order of Appeals, Downtown Development Authority, Employee Retirement System, Finance Committee, Highway Committee, Disability Committee, Police and Fire Board, Human Rights Ordinance Committee, Parks and Rec Advisory Board, Police and Fire Retirement System, Ordinance Committee, Agenda Committee, Police Chief Liaison Committee, Sidewalk Harship Committee, Pleasant Reg Fire Contract Committee, Woodward Avenue Accident Association, and Eight Mile Boulevard Association.
Wow. I don't think I ever went to the Eight Mile Boulevard. I'm going to give you credit for it. Those were early in the morning, yes, and I don't think I ever made it to one of those.
Mayor Covey's commitment to the residents of Ferndale extends beyond his duties as a member of city council was evidenced by his generous donation of time and energy to community-based organization and events, including the Ferndale Blues Festival, Ferndale Pub Crow, Southeast Oakland Coalition, Ferndale Youth Assistance, and the Ferndale Community Foundation. Mayor Covey has worked tirelessly to promote the city of Ferndale and has, through his efforts, contributed to the growth and prosperity of the city. His contribution to the community cannot be understated. He has served the city admirably and has helped to advance the quality of our community as a place in which to live and work. Now, therefore, it be resolved that Ferndale City Council, on behalf of Ferndale residents, business community, and city staff commends Mayor Craig S. Covey for his many significant contributions to the city of Ferndale, and wish him much success as he serves, continues to serve our community and the rest of the 25th District as Oakland County Commissioner.
Congratulations, buddy. This is all very, very sweet, and I appreciate it very, very much. And I did ask to be able to give a brief address. I promise it'll be less than nine minutes long. And it's hard to distill 11 years, but just a couple of things I'd like to say. As most everyone knows, because of my recent election of the Oakland County Commission in November, I am required to resign my position as your mayor next week, and I will do so on Monday, January 3rd. While I always try to finish what I start, I do want to take this opportunity and apologize to the people of Ferndale for not finishing up this term. I am so proud of the city, though, and I do promise to continue to work hard and do the best job that I can for our city and the region, now wearing a different hat. The truth is, however, that nearly all of the things that we had wanted to accomplish for the city when I first ran have been completed. When I first came to Ferndale in the late 1980s, the city was in tough shape. Property values were stagnant, some families were moving further out to the suburbs, fearing a worsening urban series of problems associated with the nearness of Detroit. I-696 did not connect under Woodward, and many of the storefronts across the city were empty. The Magic Bag Theater was still an adult porn house, and the Woodward Avenue Brewers was a massage parlor. But many people saw the potential for a rebirth of a city centrally located with character and affordable homes and a great history. It was under former Mayor Chuck Geddard's leadership that the current success of Ferndale began to take hold. It was his vision to apply new ways of thinking, to bring back walkability and slow traffic, and prepare our downtown for its resurgence. I learned a lot about government and open and honest leadership from Mayor Chuck Geddard, and also from my most important mentor, former Mayor Robert Porter. Mayor Porter helped me win my first race for city council and has acted as a friend and mentor for the past dozen years. It was Bob Porter who continued to open the city up to new ways of thinking, supporting the new families and the new cultures that were beginning to make Ferndale home. He was a huge friend to businesses here and always willing to help residents in his Bob Porter accessible way. I would like to take a minute here also and thank the gay lesbian community for the huge amount of work and support that it has added to the growth and success of Ferndale. They took a chance on Ferndale, and over the past two decades, while still only about 20%
fearing a worsening urban series of problems associated with the nearness of Detroit. I-696 did not connect under Woodward, and many of the storefronts across the city were empty. The Magic Bag Theater was still an adult porn house, and the Woodward Avenue Brewers was a massage parlor. But many people saw the potential for a rebirth of a city centrally located with character, and affordable homes, and a great history. It was under former Mayor Chuck Geddard's leadership that the current success of Ferndale began to take hold. It was his vision to apply new ways of thinking, to bring back walkability and slow traffic, and prepare our downtown for its resurgence. I learned a lot about government and open and honest leadership from Mayor Chuck Geddard, and also from my most important mentor, former Mayor Robert Porter. Mayor Porter helped me win my first race for city council, and has acted as a friend and mentor for the past dozen years. It was Bob Porter who continued to open the city up to new ways of thinking, supporting the new families and the new cultures that were beginning to make Ferndale home. He was a huge friend to businesses here, and always willing to help residents in his Bob Porter accessible way. I would like to take a minute here also and thank the gay lesbian community for the huge amount of work and support that it has added to the growth and success of Ferndale. They took a chance on Ferndale. And over the past two decades, while still only about 20% of the voting population, they fixed up their homes. They opened up and supported businesses. They joined in volunteerism on boards and commissions. And they became an accepted and integral part of the fabric that is now our city. It can be amazing to remember that just fifteen years ago, there was still a question as to whether the GLBT community could be accepted and welcomed into Ferndale. Some thought it controversial, and accused me of having a secret gay agenda. Of course, the truth is, we did have an agenda. Which was to evolve a town into one that was open, welcoming, safe, diverse, and fun. And I want to thank the greater Ferndale community for its welcoming and support and embracing the full integration of the gay community into our city. We were all so proud when the voters overwhelmingly approved the Human Rights Ordinance just a few short years ago. When I first got on council, dancing was prohibited in downtown. Tattoo parlors were considered adult businesses, and therapeutic massage facilities could not be opened there either. With the help of Councilman Galloway, and Councilman Lennon, and City Attorney Dan Christ, we changed those laws. When I first got on council, there was no Blues Festival, no DIY, no Ice Festival, no Motor City Pride. Now these events are hallmarks of Ferndale's culture, and they could have only occurred with so many different people working together for common purposes and goals. One of the things that makes me most proud in Ferndale is the cooperation and collaboration that has become standard between the city, the DDA, the Chamber of Commerce, the schools, the businesses, and the community organizations. It isn't this way in most cities, and it didn't always occur in Ferndale. This situation of all of us rowing together in the same direction towards common goals makes us so much stronger as a community. And of that, we may also be very proud. There were sad times on this city council as well. Certainly losing Councilman David Lennon was a tough time for all of us in the city. We also lost city sitting council member Jerry Kulik early last decade. But Ferndale recognizes its heroes. And we now have a Lennon Park and a Kulik Community Center named in their honors. Ferndalians also need to know the gem that they have in the 43rd District Court. Judge Joe Longo is an amazing and smart gentleman, an excellent judge, and a solid friend, and another who has provided me mentorship. My one regret on city council was our inability to provide you, Judge, with better court facilities. And I hope that someday we can rectify that situation. I was also disappointed that we were so far unable to reinstate the crosswalk at Woodward and Willington. But we can keep trying. Finally, let me thank two more groups of people in Ferndale. The seniors and other longtime residents who've been with Ferndale for decades, and who stuck by her when she was getting a little rough around the edges. And also thanks to the young people and the new families who are now making Ferndale home. Both are integral to the success of the city, and each group needs the other. Cities and towns are under great stress all across our nation today. And while the Great Recession is finally ending, and brighter economic times will slowly return to Michigan, let me caution that the city, that the only way for us to continue our success is to work together. Taxpayers in Ferndale have always been generous in funding quality city services, but their pocketbooks are under great duress. The city unions must share the current pain and understand that business as usual is no longer possible. Balancing the desire for safe streets and good city services, and recognizing the limits to taxpayers' support is a tightrope that this city council will be tasked with for years to come. With that, I thank all of the people who've worked for the city, all of my friends, all of the volunteers, the police, the fire, the DPW, all the folks at this table, the members and staff at the city hall. And all of the people of Ferndale for their love and support these past eleven years. And I want you to know that my heart swells with pride every day in this great community that we call Ferndale. We have created a wonderful place that is now a destination and a model for cities across the Midwest. We truly are the coolest city in Michigan. And of that, we can all be very proud. Thank you. One more fun thing, and that is, I have a gift certificate and some prizes for the first person who emails me with the number of times in my speech the word "pride" or "proud" appeared. You will have to find my email address. You don't count, Councilman Lennon. You can watch it on cable TV. You can watch it internet. Or you can look it up on my blog, which is there now. But you'll have to find the address. And I do have gift certificates and prizes for the first person who gets that. So with that, we are at call to council, Madam Clerk?
We certainly are, Your Honor.
All right, very good. Let's start with our Safety Department Chiefs. Chief Collins, sir, Police Department Leader.
I have nothing significant tonight, Your Honor. I would like to congratulate you and wish you well, and wish everybody a Happy New Year in the coming week.
Thank you, Chief. Keep the city safe for us. I know you will. Is our fire chief here? No. Any rep from the fire department tonight? Byron Fotitis, anything you'd like to share? Director of the Department of Public Works.
Well, Your Honor, I want to wish you, we're gonna miss you. I first met you on the Parks and Rec Board. And you have certainly have added a lot of spice to this community. Been very creative. And I want to thank you for that because you've been a great promoter.
Thank you, Byron Fotitis. I appreciate that a lot. I have known you a long time. I know you do great work. Marsha Shear, anything you'd like to share?
Just to reiterate, also, Senator, I'd like to say thank you.
I want to thank you for being a friend, and also let the city recognize that you are moving along. I think at the end of January, a well-deserved retirement and some travel, some world travel. We'll miss you. Congratulations to you as well, Marsha. Mr. Christ, anything from the City Attorney's Office?
Just wish you congratulations and best wishes on your new position, Mayor.
Thank you, Dan Christ. Sherilyn Tomlin from the Clerk's Office.
Just want to thank you for being instrumental in bringing me to Ferndale. It has been a pleasure and an honor to work for and with you.
Thank you, Sherilyn. Mr. Brunner.
Similar sentiments. Thanks for the opportunity. One of the folks who's still up here that voted to make me city manager about four years ago to the day, right now. And the last four years haven't been easy. Haven't been a lot of fun in a lot of respects. It's been a very difficult time in local government. But I'm envious of the fact that you've been around long enough to see the fruits of your labor really bear fruit. And they say that decisions are made by the people that show up, and you've been showing up for eleven years now. And it's really an admirable record of public service, and I thank you for it.
Thank you kindly. Councilwoman Piana, what do you have to share tonight?
Well, I just wanted to say thank you for your service, like everybody else. And Commissioner Dave Coulter can tell you that I do call him consistently on county business that affects Ferndale. So you'll be hearing from me on a consistent basis in your new role. And I look forward to working with you in that new capacity on issues that we both care about. So, good luck, and I'll talk to you next week.
Thank you kindly.
And also, please have a safe and happy New Year. Please do not drink and drive. Call a friend, call the cab. And please have a safe and happy New Year. See you in 2011.
Well put, Councilwoman. I neglected to mention our County Commissioner for three more days, Dave Coulter. You're still our County Commissioner. Anything you'd like to share with us tonight? And thank you for being here.
No, thank you. I heard there might be some festivities tonight, and I wanted to be here to watch them. And obviously, to congratulate you. I know you'll do well, and you have my phone number, so call me anytime. But congratulations, and job well done, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Councilman, anything you'd like to?
Well, so much of this evening's story has a tone of saying goodbye, but I really don't think of it that way. Our Commissioner Coulter's been a great team member for Ferndale. And I'm sure we're gonna work well together in our new roles. So as we look back over your career, it's amazing how many things in Ferndale that make Ferndale, Ferndale have your fingerprints all over them. That's a great accomplishment, Craig. And we're gonna miss you up here. Good luck.
Thanks, Scott. Appreciate that. Councilman Lennon?
Yes, well, what's been said is, everything that can be said has been said. But Mayor, you know, we talk quite often. And I consider you a friend. I wish you well in your new endeavor. You'll be hearing from us. I hope to be hearing from you.
Yeah, I'll be down there.
Yeah, you really want to make the meetings longer. But I wish you well. You'll do well. I know you. So I know you well enough to do well.
Thank you for sitting through the gay man's chorus. And I appreciate that.
Are they gay? I know that. I just want to wish everybody a happy and safe New Year and a prosperous, please, a prosperous '11.
Councilman, thank you kindly. Mayor Pro Tem Kate Baker. We do try to have fun up here.
What kind of space is killing me? A piece of business, Dennis Whitey, from our Financial Planning Commission that we put together, our group of citizen volunteers. They are holding a public forum tomorrow night, right in this room at 7:00 PM. Dennis wanted to make sure that it was announced, that people got a reminder to come tomorrow evening. I will be here. I'm sure many of you will be here as well. Actually, I imagine many of the people in the audience right now will be here as well. Some of our regular faces. So tomorrow night, 7:00 PM, Financial Planning Committee. Come hear what they've been working on. Give your inputs. This is a chance to talk with your city officials as well as your fellow residents about some of the things, some of the options that will be coming up in the future with regards to budgeting, our favorite thing to do. I considered making a list of all of the items that I wanted you to work on for me in Pontiac, Craig. But I decided that you will probably need to get used to morning meetings. And being pretty solidly in the minority on the Democratic side, and working with some of the very strong personalities that are up there before I should start burdening you down with my ideas and agendas on transit and parks and recreation. So I'll let you settle in. But just know that we back in Ferndale are forming coalitions with our neighbors all around southeastern Oakland County to advocate for exactly those things. So your phone will continue to ring, and we would like it to ring both ways so that you can let us know what's going on in Pontiac. And we will keep you apprised of what we're working on in the region when it comes to service consolidation, service sharing, and transit.
You got it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you kindly.
Congratulations. Happy New Year. Get ready for morning meetings.
Will do. We do have a closed session, but let me end this by again thanking everybody. Chief Collins, if someone can give my regards to the fire chief as well. Mr. Brunner, good luck to you. Best of luck. I know you're gonna love that new job, and I wish you all of the best up there. Dan, I don't know any attorney who's as professional and hardworking as you. I've enjoyed working with you the whole time I've been up here. Councilwoman Baker, you're up.
I thought I was up on Monday, but okay.
I'm gonna just start to get used to how that feels. I will resign, I think, like on noon, if that's fine, on Monday.
It doesn't have to.
You'll need to probably take an oath or something in the next few days. Yeah, there is some heft, and you might want to use that on Councilman Lennon.
I can keep things in line.
Once in a while. But Kate, my phone is always available. Anything you need, even just advice, or a thought, or even someone to talk to, I'm there for you, for sure. Councilman Galloway, nine years. You and I are the longest councilmen up here. We've got a lot of good work done. Councilman Lennon, you've been a friend and an ally, as well as a pain in my side. But, you know, I'm kidding.
My job.
You know, I love you. Melanie, I'm just totally impressed with you, and I know good things are gonna come. I'm gonna work with you, of course. But I see a great future to you. And in the movie, The Wizard of Oz, at the very end, Dorothy turns to the straw man and says, "I'm gonna miss you the most, Sherilyn." "I knew you'd be fun when you got here." And she wasn't sure about me at all. And finally, I can thank my favorite blues guitarist, all of my friends, Bob, my treasure, and Monica Mills, and Greg. All of you guys. I couldn't believe what you did tonight. It was very, very cool. And I hope that our closed session's gonna be over quickly because we do have an impromptu reception beginning right now at Rosie O'Grady's. And there will be hot hors d'oeuvres. Everyone is welcome. And as long as you can stay up, some of us don't have to get up early in the morning, we will do a little informal roaming to the businesses downtown tonight. So you're all welcome to that. So with that, we will temporarily close the meeting. I will say goodbye to all of the folks who watch the show on TV. I appreciate you watching. You're the ones that keep us honest. I believe my father in Canton, Ohio, was watching it livestreamed. Dad, I love you. You enabled me to do all this. Thank you kindly. We need a motion to?
I move that we go into closed sessions for the purposes of a strategy session connected with a negotiation of collective bargaining agreement pursuant to Section 8C, and to review and consider an application for appointment or appointment to public hours pursuant to Section 8F.
Got it. Seconded by Councilwoman Piana. Good job. Well done.
Ready to vote? Councilmembers Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yeah.
Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Covey?
Yes. Two-minute break. I need to use the restroom. If you don't mind.
I'm singing it every night. I may only be here for two. Thank you so much.
They're good.
Yeah. Where's Monica? Someone just called? I'm gonna keep it.
I was still working on the LOU. That's why I'm hosting that. But I don't actually have an update. So it's just this time.